...education, meeting. And thank you for seeing me or acting, smiling people. That beginning where you work more well, the projection. And that is probably all that, young first, to be part of a place in two. You were certainly well at this time. We're calling the lead board. Please begin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, leading the board. Ladies and gentlemen, students, it does welcome everybody to turn to this as well as those of us who are watching us online. Say thank you as well. Glad that you're here with us. First item on the agenda is, I don't know, two, is the invitation. And we're honored to see you have with us, War Force Honor Guard Commander, Bill Stockton. We will leave you some invitation. Matt Stockton, come forward. If you want to share your experience as well. So, for yours.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. Uh, I've only been in, let's say, six years. But I'm blessed. I retired and I lived here. This is a wonderful county, great. Thank you, God, a county, a Christian family. Those values are things that live in here. I wish I had have been born and raised here like so many. Definitely got to play in my life, so I'm here now. And I'm very pleased and proud to follow through my home. There's a, there's a gentleman sitting over here to my left, your right. I imagine most of you know Colonel George Fletcher. When I lived up here, he got involved in all the veteran activities in the county. And, and I was ballin' home for a long time. That being the case tonight, I've been ballin' home, so here I am. But I am very proud and pleased to be here today. And I'd like to put a word in very mouth. Oh, Lord, I ask that you come now, come to this room and live with us and do what you know, spread and speak with these people. And everybody concerned with affairs and the business. Teaching and educating our young people. Our, our future generation and our future leaders. Lord, I pray that everything that's said and done right here would be pleasing in your sight. Lord, I know there are going to be differences that sometimes we have with each other. But I pray that, that we take things into consideration with each other and that we work things out when God do manage. I thank you so much for this. The school system, Lord. Uh, you know how I feel about it. This is one of the most patriotic counties I've ever lived in, we've been involved with. And the students are so respectful, Lord. Every time I go in the school, uh, I'm just amazed. How attentive they are. And, Lord, I, I know a lot of this stems and comes from the home and the families. And I know the school has a great deal to do with this. Lord, and I pray that, that you will be with them and you will continue to believe that these administrators and these teachers with these students and prepare them for the future in a way that is pleasing and benefit, uh, them and their families, our nation, and you, Lord. And then just help us in each and every day and every trial that we come to, make good things and be pleasing on your side. Believe us, please, right, especially, Lord, and have these people, uh, take care of the business of them. In a manner that is pleasing to you. All these things I thank you for. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, thank you. Not only like to add it, but Matt Stockton and members of the Army Veterans Teams have conducted five schools.
Yes, sir.
Five programs in the past week. What an honor it is to have you. Coming to the schools and we're so happy that you have opportunity to meet you.
It is, it's my honor to be here. Like I said, this is the most blessed place to live in. Those of you that have not lived anywhere else, or have always been here your whole life, you don't realize probably how good you have here. And, and what a great community and, and the county and, and the family and the place that the school system is just fabulous. I have twelve grandchildren down around the central area. And I can assure you, I promise you, when I go down there, it's a different world. I wish my grandkids were here, but my kids are down there where the jobs are for the education services, the training services. They, they have to reside there for the time being, but hopefully, like me, they will come north someday. And like I tell everybody, uh, I, yes, I was born and raised in Atlanta and around that area, but twelve wise guys could not drag me back there.
Matt Stockton, thank you, sir. At this time, I'd like to welcome Lieutenant Colonel George Fletcher. Colonel Fletcher, what an honor it is to have you here, sir.
Thank you.
And Colonel Fletcher is going to lead us in the pledge.
Colonel, if you'd please rise and face the flag. The flag code has been changed. For those that do not know, those that are, uh, veterans may use a hand salute or place their hand over their heart. At least they have the option to do either one. So, would you follow me or join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag? By the numbers, one. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. It's a privilege to have such a crew that honors our students then. And, uh, passed along where we can do the, uh, flag etiquette classes and the appreciation classes. Because the future belongs to those students that we have in schools. So, we need to bring them along. And I thank the board for allowing us to do that. And of course, the principals and the staff of all the schools. I, I don't get around to many of the students. I used to, but I understand Bill's doing a good job. Since he's gone, I do.
Followed home. Okay, Mr. Colonel Fletcher, thank you so much.
Do you want to round the applause?
Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Item four, two parts. First, item A, we may have a proof agenda. And then, item B, we'll prove the minutes. We have two sets of minutes for review. The first, this is mainly opened up in November fourth for a call meeting at noon. Next item is our regular last month, we, October tenth, 2016, we have a score for those that are in the table. Thank you, sir. Mr. Chair, I recommend to bring the items of consent agenda, also the minutes asked present.
May the chair have a note for the last page, please.
Most improved, senior agenda asked for.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I'll raise a flag. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda, that's a special recognition, Mr. Chair. I'd like to talk about the first one. Director of Transportation, Dan Crawford, if you can come forward. I'd like you to talk a little bit about the 2019 Van County Bus Roadman.
Good evening, board, good evening, Tim. Uh, we held our school bus rodeo this year, uh, back in October. We chose to do that, and normally it's held in May, but we chose to do it in October this year. So, that, uh, it's a skill building competition for our drivers. And, uh, we'll show a little video here of kind of what, what's going on with it. But it's a skill building exercise and a competition for our drivers. And we chose to do it in October so that our drivers would hopefully retain those skills and keep them throughout the year versus having it in May and then the driver being off in the summertime. So, keep, keep things fresh in your mind. Uh, it's a very difficult course to compete in. Uh, for those of you don't know whether what a rodeo is, that they don't really ride a bus or, or rope one. Uh, but they get on board and basically they're judged on different events. Uh, such as driving through a serpentine or, or backing up into an alley. And student drop offs. To make sure that, uh, they're doing things the right way. And they're awarded points depending on, uh, on how well they score in those areas. So, it's all in an effort to keep our kids safe. And it's a lot of fun for our driver to get participated in this. And, uh, this evening I have our two, uh, second and third place winners. Uh, the first place winner is actually on a trip this evening with a wrestling team in Lunkin County. So, at this point, you want to call him up now?
Well, let's start the video. Okay, let's do it.
Idea of what the product is.
Well, this is awesome. Also want to give some recognition to Mr. Price for allowing us to have two of his employees to help us with the rodeo. And Miss Shayna Reimer, who put this video together for us. Uh, an awesome job on her part. But the brass, you also seen some people that you've probably never seen. And those were some Union County people who came down and joined us. Union County's never been involved in a rodeo. This was their first time. They have a new director. And, uh, we encouraged, reached out and encouraged them to join us. And they got to join us. And they were scoring along with our drivers. Uh, and then, of course, they have their own separate winner and, and we have the Van County winners. And, uh, it was all a really good time. And the best part of all of it is, again, we were able to get valuable time behind the wheel. We teach the drivers the skills and allow them to show off their skills, which is a big compliment in keeping our kids safe. So, without further ado, uh, I'd like to welcome Mr. Darryl Davis. And Mr. John Henry, come on up and join me. Ladies and gentlemen, our second and third place contestants for the rodeo. Uh, Mr. Dillinger, I said he's on the field trip tonight. And he will actually go in June to compete at the state level. Uh, this will be our, we were trying to decide if it was the tenth or the eleventh year we've competed. So, I'm not really sure on that, but we've been in, we've been doing this for quite a while. So, uh, it's, uh, it's a really good thing for our drivers and to build this field. Blasé to the finest rider we have right here taking for you. Uh, good, excellent job for our system, keeping our kids safe. And that's what we're all about.
Congratulations. Congratulations, Chair. And board, if we can come up, let's take a photograph.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Congratulations, sir.
Also, a favor missed. I have actually one other driver in the running here. He just, uh, let's be fair for a different purpose, but I'm, I'm saying, Mr. Robert Dewey, he's one of our, our best drivers of the class. So, thank you.
I'd ask the board to stay up here. Let you remember that previous meeting. You may remember the previous meeting where you received straight elevated position as a platinum or silver. Recognized. That was recognized. This last meeting, this was a surprise. Three school districts in the state of Georgia have escaped with access to a permanent health standard. Nutrition program and management schools and leadership of the city. And I'm so proud of them for the wonderful practices they have just done.
The state gives us four, four large school districts. We do consider that, that's one of the, we wanted to stay.
I'll, I'll, um, share a few things that, um, we recognize. One more, I'll, I'll be afraid. This is a program that the State Department of Education's School Nutrition Division started about three years ago, I believe. And to recognize outstanding school nutrition programs. And it is an honor for the school nutrition program, which is, there's twenty-nine of the state's school nutrition programs. I just want to ask twenty-nine. And all the hard work they do, then by staff, they recognize at this level. Twenty-nine local staff in this school nutrition. It is, it's so amazing for them to be recognized at this level and the hard work that they did. Uh, they were recognized for their shake it up awards, which we're here in the fall for their gold double presentation. All of those things that they do throughout the year, including the government, lead up to being able to qualify. So, it is really an awesome award for Van County to have this thing. And I'm so proudly proud of the district and, and the staff that have this.
We're proud of you and proud of you. Congratulations. Special recognition, I'd like to, at this time, to them for West Van's performance.
Last spring, we, uh, West Van, we submitted a proposal to the STEM forum, STEM conference. It's, uh, in Athens, Georgia, every, every fall. And, um, just to put this in perspective, uh, educators from all over the state submit proposals, uh, to present at this conference. And not all the proposals get accepted. So, uh, you know, again, we, we submitted a proposal for our students to go to this big conference, this big STEM and STEAM conference, and present their projects that they worked on throughout the year last year. And these are, uh, projects that are kind of more, you know, middle school, high school level, uh, science experiments and projects. And, uh, we were, again, fortunate enough to where these proposals were accepted. And, and the kids that you're going to see here tonight, yeah, they were the ones that were chosen, uh, to do this, to go down there and present. And I'll tell you, they, uh, they represented our school and our school system with, uh, class and with confidence. And they just did a, a fabulous job. I, I can't even imagine doing what they did when I was in fifth grade. I would have probably just ran and hid in the corner somewhere. And they, uh, they just did a fabulous job. So, I'm just really proud of them. And I'm, uh, I'm gonna, uh, turn it over though to, to, uh, somebody that doesn't always like to speak in front of people too much. But we've got, we've got one teacher here, the two teachers that really gave up their time, gave up their planning, gave up their, uh, after-school time to, to get this together and to work with these kids. One of them's Amber Mitchell, she's not with us tonight. And the other one's Kim Patterson, our STEM STEAM lab teacher. So, she's going to come up here real quick and introduce these kids.
Definitely not my thing. And to say how proud we are, I mean, it's just amazing what these kids are able to do and what they have done and how far they are going to go in the future. And we are, um, working with another, the sons of the kids again this year. And it's just amazing what they're doing, so proud and thankful for the parents, very supportive for parents. And I'm going to ask them to come up and introduce them. And if they would, if you would like to know what their projects were, they can share that with me. How about Albany and Madison? These are current good riders.
So, our project was, um, to make a natural chapstick. And, um, we made it out of shade runner, green black, carbon oil, and beet seeds. And, um, most chapsticks are made in, oh. But our chapstick is more natural and it's more, um... And maybe just, we were, um... We looked, uh, on, on the earlier, uh, these chapsticks. And, um, we kind of just combined, uh, different, different, yeah.
And we have, and Logan, his partner is in, oh, sorry. And Logan, his partner is, okay, is not here tonight, but Logan can talk to you at this point.
Okay, so my name is Logan. And our project was to determine if females who participate in athletic activities have a higher or lower resting pulse rate. Resting pulse rate is obviously how your, how high your heart beats when you're resting. And, uh, we figured out that, uh, people who plays for females in sports actually have a higher resting pulse rate. But with adults, that is totally different because we done third, fourth, and fifth grades. But with adults, uh, who participate in athletic activities, of course, your resting pulse rate is really lower. But it's a little bit different because it's probably a little bit better for you if you're at a young age to do it. It's, it's good for you. It's better to have a higher resting pulse rate whenever you're a child. To have, to have that, that higher resting pulse rate whenever you're a child.
Danica and Ray.
So, our project was determining carbohydrates, sugars, and protein. And that how to do this is to use chemicals such as allican, hydrid, and berries. And to be tested and then be tested in the chemical and it changed, took a different color than how, um... How would I get catching two different colors? And the reason why we chose this, um, project is because we wanted to know if food labels were actually nutritional.
We got Lauren and David.
I'm hoping those active bars have trained. But then this is... So, so later, we thought of a bunch of drinks that we knew had acid in it. So that any, yeah, something in, like a still formula called formal solution. And we mixed it together and then how much acid was in it. Drink it. Lemon juice, we made on the test. For natural and artificial products.
Okay, uh, two more students that weren't able to be here tonight, Avery and, um, Lily. And they were, they were makeup girls too.
I bet it was actually a beard.
Beard, that's right, it was for Mr. Riddick.
Then you show up.
I'd also want to pull this statement this year. This is Robert, assistant assistant superintendent. Robert is like a STEM coordinator. And Robert's a high school college teacher. And they may have had Robert, so a few of us graduated with Robert in high school. So, very proud of Robert for, and STEM, he was recognized. We'll pause for a picture.
Debbie, can I get you to move over?
Which way?
To the right.
Are you good?
Yes. I watched many of these cases, kindergarten comes through. I tried to stump some of them on, on to actually test them. And a whole time that I tried to stump the higher generations, they were often things that were high school related. Uh, they are very impressive, very proud of them, and what she's done after, we've been told, and mom, and, and Dr. Barnes. held her, and mom, and Dr. Barnes has helped out and grown up a little. I'm very, very proud of you. I've always known that a little bit since I was a kid. Very, very thankful.
Make our future play.
All right, our next item on the agenda, item number six, is school rapids. And, uh, Ms. Luth, quick, West Bend on there, so tell us what's going on at West Bend.
Here's our beautiful nineteen twenty faculty and staff. I'm gonna give you a picture of them on here. Um, here's some, uh, a highlight, uh, some Georgia milestones data, uh, that I just wanted to bring up. This is, uh, the same cohort, this is, uh, going from third grade ELA to fourth grade ELA. And if you look at that, you'll see, you know, the, the beginning learners, about the same percentage, but if you look on the top, same cohort moving from, uh, third grade to fourth grade, that's a massive difference in the percentage of distinguished learners that we had. And that, that's level four, that's, that's, that's where you want to, that's the best you can be there. And, and then this shrinking yellow is a good thing, that's a shrinking developing learner. And, um, this, uh, this couldn't happen without some really hard work and some dedication. Uh, we had a couple of teachers, um, uh, that were actually rookie teachers, uh, it was Hallie Dean and Kaylee Bryant that just, uh, led the way to make this happen. And they did that and they, they, uh, they took the bookworm series that was introduced here, uh, in Fann and they, and they used that with integrity. Uh, they listened to our academic coach, Ms. Morgan, that's here with us tonight. And, uh, anyway, I'm just really proud of, of these kids and the, and the teachers that that made that happen. But that's just a big jump and it's something I wanted to point out and, uh, just proud of them. Uh, another thing, CCRPI highlights. Um, the, um, the CCRPI, uh, score seventy-five point eight for our school. That is down from eighty-two, but the way that this works, and I know Sarah Rigdon will probably be going into nuts and bolts at some point with a lot of this, but I'm really more proud of our seventy-five point eight this year than I was our eighty-two last year because of the way that the learning targets are and all those things. And just really proud, I feel like our students and our teachers worked really, really hard for that score. And that progress score of eighty-eight point nine, uh, that means we're taking kids and we're growing them. Math progress score of a hundred plus. Um, I, uh, I had to submit some data to people at the state about, about this and, uh, they came back and let me know that we're, we're only, you know, we're one of very few schools in the whole state that had a hundred-plus math progress two years in a row. Uh, so that's just, that was just something we're really excited about. And that, that again, just means that we're taking kids and no matter where they, no matter where they are and we'll grow, you know, taking the struggling learners, uh, taking the, the, the ones that are already high achievers and just getting student growth out of all the kids. And, and, uh, so that's just something we're really proud of and I wanted to bring that up here often. Professional learning, of course, uh, we have more professional wanting going on in this county than I think we've ever had, uh, when it comes to, uh, again, the, the bookworms, literacy, professional learning that we're excited about, uh, math frameworks, um, uh, STEM and STEAM PL, just a lot of technology, professional learning that we have that we're just thankful for and the different conferences that we get to attend. Just very thankful that our teachers have the opportunities that we have here, uh, for all the professional learning that we have. Uh, here, uh, part of our school improvement plan is, uh, to increase or improve attendance. And, uh, one thing that we've seen that's already, uh, proven success, uh, successful for our kids that are, that have attendance issues is to, uh, assign them a mentor. And mentor is kind of a loose term here, it's just as simple as if, uh, if a kiddo gets out of the car and they're, I'm, I'm a mentor, so if, if one of those kids gets out of the car and they're on my list, I make sure that I go up and, and give that kid a big hug, start a conversation with them, tell them just how thankful we are for them to be at school that day. And so Deputy Summers, I mean, he, he does so much for our school, but he is one of those mentors and he's just awesome at it. And then so is Sandy Graham, she's one of our career professionals and they, they both just do a great job with that, just making sure that they're, they're good mentors for those kids. Uh, literacy, uh, we're excited up there in the top left, we had our, uh, our, our free library that the News Observer, uh, helped us, uh, get so that kids can come and, and take books and, uh, whenever they want for free. Uh, here in the top right, we have one of our students, Garrett Pittman. He, uh, presented and read to, he's a fifth grader, he read to a second grade class, uh, and used, uh, ventriloquism to do that. So it was just kind of neat to see, uh, that some of the kids that maybe don't just necessarily sit there and listen all the time, when he was speaking, uh, through, uh, with his puppet, they, you know, they, they were amazed and they were listening and, and, and really in tune with it. So I was just really proud of him for doing that and it was pretty cool to see. Bottom left, we have, uh, uh, fifth graders that are, are different, uh, older kids reading to younger kids, that's something we've been doing. And then the UNG scholars there have come and, uh, read to our students. Uh, more literacy, uh, here, we have the Equocratic Center on the right, uh, they come and read to our pre-K, uh, and I always try to make sure I'm in there for that because they just do a great job and, and, and those kids, uh, it's just amazing to see them pay attention to, to, to all of the things Equocratic Center offers. And then on, on the left, we have some, some, uh, lady that dressed up like Stella Luna and that's Sarah Wells, that's our curriculum director. And she came and, uh, read to, to one of our classes and, uh, read the books Stella Luna and dressed like the main character. So, uh, again, the kids were excited to, to see that. Um, STEM and STEAM, a lot of these pictures here, like in the top right and the bottom left, those are still, uh, those are, uh, kids getting to go down to our outdoor classroom and, uh, to our stream and, and they, uh, they participate in what's called Adopt a Stream. So, uh, fourth grade collects the macro imvertebrates out of the streams to test the water quality. Fifth grade tests all of the, uh, water chemicals, pH, phosphates, nitrates, uh, things like that, and they submit all their data back to the Adopt a Stream database. Um, in the middle and the bottom, those are the kids that you just, uh, saw present. Um, and pop left, the art center's, uh, been doing some great things with us this year. And, uh, in the bottom right, Noah Sims, that was on Master Chef, I believe it was called, he's come out a couple of times and, and, uh, and, and does projects with, uh, different pockets of our kids at, at West Bend, uh, about food pairings and chemicals in food and, uh, things of that nature. So it's kind of cool to see him come out. Um, here, we have, uh, something we've been working on with Little Pond Hospitality. Uh, they, they're the people that own, uh, Pachina Rustica and Harvest on Main and, uh, Mozzarella and those restaurants. And our kids, um, our kids, uh, have, um, had the opportunity to grow fruits and vegetables for those restaurants on our campus and then put those in those restaurants and, and get some items on the menu. So it's just, it's kind of neat to see that. On the bottom, we've got, uh, the hospital, uh, Jason Jones is there, uh, Steve O'Neal there, and, uh, that's the radiology department and they came to our STEM lab and did some radiology, uh, presentations with our kids. And we, the, the goal was to have a different department possibly to, to do that in our STEM lab, uh, from the hospital. Uh, Lion King, uh, we have that coming up, Mr. Ben Sexton, our music teacher, will be, uh, doing that. And here's the different dates and times for that, I'm sure more and more information will come out about that, uh, as we go. Um, also, uh, field trips, just really excited for all the different opportunities we have in this county for field trips. Uh, I know that not every county has those opportunities and, uh, so we, we're just thankful for that. One that I really want to highlight is our kids getting the opportunity to go, uh, to see the traveling get involved. And I know all the fifth grades from all of the elementary schools went for that, but it was just something, uh, really, really cool for us to, to, to be able to do. Uh, there's just some more pictures of some of our field trips. Uh, community and events, uh, we have, uh, top left with our kids that participated in the ETC Spelling Bee, uh, this past Saturday, that's Will Jones, Megan Jones, Evan Thurman, and Maylie Gibbs. In the middle there, we have the, our Halloween, uh, celebration, so that was my favorite costume. That was, uh, we have, uh, we have, uh, pregnant, a fifth grade teacher and, uh, one of our fifth grade students dressed up like her, so that's one of my favorites. I don't know what that says about me, but it was just there. Uh, the, uh, well, we have Water Day, Special Olympics, we're very proud of those kids. School Lunch Week, uh, Okoye that came to visit, uh, Animal Hospital, and then Mike Cole there, you see, for, and Bill Staudt, a little background for our Veterans Day program. We're, uh, just really excited about that and that was a great day for us. Um, top right, we have, uh, uh, one of our students that, uh, was the winner of the, the Buzz Safety, uh, poster, Olivia Wigan, so that was exciting. And then we even, uh, I even sent my parent liaison over to East Bend for the Wildcat Car Show, so I've heard of that, yeah, so we, uh, we even helped out East Bend a little bit. He put a shirt on, one of the Wildcat shirts, but anyone. The, uh, uh, school clubs, um, just really, uh, proud of our school clubs and all of the elementary schools. And some of this just kind of came, I don't know, and I already knew this was the case, but, uh, that picture in the bottom left there, that's Carly Holloway, and she asked, uh, my wife, Miranda Roof, and I to, to run with her in, in the middle school race that they had. And, uh, it was just kind of cool because she's, we, we kind of served as mentors for her with running and it just kind of sunk into me that these clubs, they're not just helping out, uh, currently, but they're helping out in the future. So you see these cross-country teams that are succeeding because of some of these kids that were participating in running clubs. Our robotics clubs are gonna have a, a drastic effect on what's coming up in TSA in the future. Anyway, it's just cool to see those clubs having an effect, not only now, but, but in the future as well. Um, robotics competition coming up this Saturday, uh, or no, not this Saturday, November twenty-third, eight AM in, in Union County, so we'll be, uh, we'll be hoping for good news there. Will Jones, uh, one of our students, he was, uh, uh, nominated for the Do-Tip program and he was accepted, so that's a big honor for him. And pre-K week, we had all of the different readers that came, Dr. Guadney, members from the county office, lots of fun for pre-K week and we're very, very thankful for a pre-K, can't say it enough. And then Sploes, well, our new parking lot, uh, looks great, uh, looks fabulous out there. And then the outdoor painting, indoor painting, pressure washing, it's all dope, uh, so very thankful for Sploes to thank you for letting us do it. Thank you. How many? It's a great place to be.
Welcome, thank you. Next item is school donors team update. You have to sit with them, it's ours. Well, tell us about the other school.
Good evening, I was just wondering, I was very busy, so, uh, so eventually there was no celebration requests for our, our field trips, uh, so that's very, they're going to fundraise a request, they're going to sell chicken, uh, all January, February, rates been in, in the states, in presses. And then, uh, Ms. Sarah Welch came over and explained to the team what that's, how it's for, meaning it, and how that helps us realize, you know, how, how a lot of students are doing, and that was a good presentation. East Bend, East Bend has had a couple of meetings, uh, it was Hey Manny with early, uh, twenty-eight, so he could go over and one of the things he did was he shared East Bend's CCRPI, he talked with the team, he explained it, and, and he did a great job doing it. There's a fundraiser, so they're gonna be raising money for picture, some things for, uh, for December, April, and, and, and then in the ladies' second grade is, uh, raising money in sex, so they still work them. Uh, the fundraiser, as they said, went to the, uh, law, they don't, any of the press will appear, they went to a party, champs, and they're going to, Dick and Gordon's gonna go to Tennessee, they're leaving, they're going. Uh, West Bend, no celebration requests, it's, it's been over, Special Olympics, going field trip, and the, when the top park race, going to Talis Museum in, uh, January, and then there's gonna be fundraiser requests, Ms. Morgan went over about data and different data, so all the, uh, screens and tests that are being tested, that are, and then giving a feeling, seeing that they, okay, so now you can get into the extras that were played on there. Miss, uh, Moncrie, uh, had a softball banquet, that was a training facility, these requests. Uh, our field trips, uh, there's like four CBI, windy-based construction field trips that were approved for students to go out, specialists to go out in the community. We had four competitions with Ms. White, uh, going with her, and her students with the culture of the community. Mr. Wesley, uh, took TSA to the state venture in General Island. And we, we've had, uh, they were, they threw three band trips to go and get ready to, uh, to the class center and, and some of our schools to compete. Uh, the fundraiser request, uh, they approved the Live Touch, uh, contract, called to give theirs for pictures and their new pictures that they're going to release for this year, which helps raise the money for the general fund. And then we agreed with the Pro contract, which, you know, they use for concessions for the different sporting events and, or their machines. And it was Dara came over, this was his month, uh, he came over and discussed facilities and, and main events and things that have been done for the summer at the Moon School and improvements that have been made and talked about, you know, over initially and that's finally, and what we're gonna do with what the future looks like down the road with facilities, so we, we, we've outlined for them. So, the high school, uh, the gym, athletic facility, these requests, Chuck Patterson is going to use that old gym, we would say Rascun practice.
Rascun practice.
And, uh, and Bill has requested, uh, the stadium for, in April for Special Olympics. Their field trips, uh, we have two different groups that are going to Chattanooga or went to Chattanooga, not hoping to see the fifty-four under championships. Uh, this gives to, uh, Georgia, Hosa competed. We had at the LA, they competed, and then there were three of the A, uh, the three different A competitions they went to. Ms. Matthews and Ms. Dean took, uh, they've been taking kids out to, look at different farms, they went to a farm that had cattle operation, they went to a goat farm, and then they went to Sizzamong Home to look at what forestry industry does and the vital products from that. So, um, Ms. Workman is gonna, going to go to the Alcatraz Museum in November and Ms. Oldsworth is gonna perform, the chorus is gonna perform at UCB, so they're gonna be going there. And then everyone comes, sends units to Special Olympics. Fundraisers at the high school, there's always a lot going on because of all their extracurricular, uh, things. And they also did their soft grants and their school picture contracts. And Mr. Danner came to the high school and discussed all the improvements that have been made and, and worked on over the summer. And then, uh, Ms. Diller talked about the fact that they were giving lessons to all the students during the homeroom and everything on digital citizenship for the students so they'll understand, they'll be better equipped with that. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. Any questions?
Lots back to you. One, any question? Thank you, Sam. Next item on the agenda is the central office up there this month, Director of Chief Sarah Rigdon's gonna share a report of the twenty-nineteen CCRPI.
Good evening.
Well, and you've been here today.
I have, I've been, all day I was at the, uh, Advanced Day, Covenant Conference, Bay Harbor, and so we have.
That's safe.
Well, thank you, it was wonderful, very motivating. So this evening, I got a few moments to present to you and share with you our twenty-nineteen CCRPI information. Of course, uh, what is CCRPI? It is part of the accountability and system that's toward the users. So first, let me tell you where you can find it, because you can spend absolutely hours poring over the data. Um, the, the data can be located at CCRPI dot gado dot org. Now, when you're looking at it, you may think, what can I compare? How can I tell how our schools are doing? You can compare, uh, twenty-eighteen scores and twenty-nineteen scores directly because those scores were achieved using the same metrics. The twenty-seventeen scores are not comparable, but actually kind of hidden those back and the reason why is you just can't compare them, they didn't get the same, um, calculations. So that's where the scores can actually be located. So what is CCRPI? CCRPI is required in the federal law, uh, that every student succeeds that, every state must have an accountability system. The accountability system, the purpose behind it was to give the public and educators, everyone, an idea of how schools are performing. That is the thought fossils behind it. That is the thought fossils behind it. Of course, even before ESO, we had no child up behind. So this notion is not new. We're about 20 years into accountability right now. And most of the accountability is coming through us from the federal government instead of the state government. So after ESO was signed into law, the Georgia DLA spent two years trying to gather information from different stakeholders to try to come up with a system that was fair to determine how schools were performing. And so they did a lot of meetings and they took that feedback and they tried their best to figure out a way to quantify what's going on in our schools. And some refinements were made in CCRPI. So that's what it is. But here's what it's not. CCRPI is not the final word on a school's performance or quality because all schools face different challenges and there's really no way to come up with one single score to describe how a school's performing. It is useful data though, because we can use this information to look at our performance, determine what our strengths and weaknesses are, and then identify solutions. So here's the downside of CCRPI. In our state, the majority of CCRPI is related back to standardized test measures. The vast majority actually is generated from standardized tests. At the elementary and middle school levels, eighty-six point six percent of CCRPI is actually pulled from standardized test results. At the high school level, it's about seventy-three percent, which is based on standardized test results. There are three parts of CCRPI that are exclusively determined by standardized tests. That's content mastery, progress, and closing the gaps. And all of us realize that sometimes standardized tests aren't the best measure of how well a child is learning and how well they're progressing. So this graphic will show you a little bit about how the state looks like in a year to year. In center, this shows the 2019 scores versus the 2018 scores. And this is state level information showing you what elementary, middle, high, and then all schools averages were across the state. If you take just a moment to look at it, you will quickly determine that from eighteen to nineteen, almost all of the schools in the state were the lost ground, if you consider that losing ground, your score to go lower. There are two interesting quotes that you'll find on this slide. The first one, the top one, was actually a quote from our state school superintendent, Mr. Richard Woods. "As we aim to lessen the number of high stakes tests our students take, we need the weight of testing in CCRPI to reflect the same priorities," Superintendent Woods said. "Georgia's parents, taxpayers, students, and educators deserve a fair measurement of performance that lifts up rather than labels our public schools." Remember, this is the chief educator in the whole state of Georgia. So he was very disturbed about the trends that he saw, as was our governor. The bottom quote was his. "I'm a strong supporter of holding schools accountable for increased student achievement. But in a year when we've seen nearly across the board increases in national test scores and graduation rates, as well as Georgia milestone scores, seeing the CCRPIs show a decrease instead of raise, instead raises concerns about the measurement used to determine school and district achievement," Governor Fitz said. So let's begin. First, I'll take you on a trip down memory road. This was 2018. The ladder color on the left shows the district compared to state, which is on the right. So here are the district scores being compared to the state at the district level, elementary, middle, and high school. And almost in every situation, our score was higher than the state average. And that was based on our growth in 2018 compared to a baseline which was set in 2017. Remember, all of this is primarily built on standardized test scores. 2019, you'll see that the inverse has happened. In almost every situation, the district score is actually slightly lower than what the state score is. The same color code goes here. And we've got S in the white and blue, state in the dark blue, looking at district, elementary, middle, and high school. You will note that the middle school had a bit of a bounce last year. Their CCRPI overall increased about four points over what it was last year. The other schools did see a decline in their CCRPI score. This slide is a little bit painful to look at. It's terrible resolution too. This is the pioneer visa overall comparison. Last year, you'll remember that our bar was right up in here somewhere. Actually, it was right there because we were first in our visa. This year, ours is right down here. We're at seventy-one point seven. So we're a big company though, because there's about eight districts that were far within five points of us. So as you'll know, most of the districts are scattering right there together. Okay? So that's how the overall pioneer visa looks. Now let's dig into the components. First component is content mastery. Content mastery defines how the students are achieving and the level necessary to be prepared for the next grade level, for a course, or college, or career. So this is showing you the district performance for elementary, middle, and high school in all of the four continent areas, ELA, math, science, and social studies. To the far right, you'll see how the district compared to the state. If you look at elementary, you'll see that the district outperformed the state by just a very small margin. Middle school, a bit of a bounce, remember, they outperformed the state. High school will slightly below the state average also at seventy point six. One thing to note, we did see decline last year in our ELA scores primarily at the elementary level. But anytime you're going through a major change in the way that you do things and you're going through a lot of professional learning, it's not uncommon to see that scores actually decline before they turn around and go a different correction. And so right now, we're in the midst of very intensive professional learning at every level for ELA and at the elementary level in math particular. The next part of CCRPI is about progress. And Mr. Ruth alluded progress in his presentation earlier. Progress is simply looking at where your child's been and where they're at now. And so one of the separate sections of CCRPI about progress, it too is based on students' test scores. There are three areas for progress that are measured. One is ELA, the other one's math, the third one is ELP, which is English language proficiency. So in this column, the reason why it's TFS, which means too few students, means that we have less than fifteen students in that subgroup. So only at the elementary level do we have fifteen or more students who take the access test as part of their ESOL program. Again, it's another standardized test. The rest is based on milestones. You can see that our math scores actually were a little bit higher this year. And it also bears out that the elementary ELA was slightly lower. On the far side, you can also see our, our performance versus the state. District elementary was lower, district middle school was higher, ninety-one point one, which is awesome. High school was also a little bit lower at seventy point nine compared to the state, which is eighty point one. The third part, closing the gaps, is probably the place where we saw our greatest declines. When you look at closing the gaps, that's where the monster group is moving their learning target. In 2017, the state set a baseline of student achievement. Then they calculated what a three percent or a six percent gain would be. And based on how students performed, you earned your flag status. So the green flag with the silver or the gold star, that's near a six percent improvement target. This is meeting the three percent target. This is didn't meet target, made some gain, red flag, didn't meet target. If you will recall, in 2017, when we set our baseline, our students did not score very well on the standardized test, which was great in 2018 because we had a phenomenal spring of eighteen. But when you calculate an achievement target, you have to continually move forward every single year and that same target is added to the prior year's performance. So having that amazing performance in eighteen made it extremely difficult to meet that target in nineteen. The good news for us is our targets for twenty will be based on our performance in nineteen, which that means that it gives us a fighting chance of moving forward and making green flags instead of red flags. This is the hardest one to look at. Last year, when we looked at closing the gaps, elementary schools did much, much better. They were a hundred percent. This year, it was twenty-five district, state average was seventy-three point eight, middle school sixty-six point seven, state was fifty, high school twenty-one point four, state was eighty. So this one got us much, much more difficult because the rate twenty-eight scored. The final section of CCRPI is based on readiness. This also is looking at one part of standardized achievement. Literacy is taken from the milestone scores. Then of course, attendance is the number of days that students miss, ten percent or less of the number of days they're enrolled. And then beyond that, it means that we're offering other opportunities for our students to be successful, like using the art, things such as that. So over here, you can see the comparison and we did actually pretty well with readiness of the elementary and middle school levels. Well, actually, here's high school readiness. The first two columns are the same, literacy and attendance. The next one is accelerated enrollment, followed by pathway completion, and then the college and career readiness, which was eighty-one point three seven. Our district score was seventy-nine point one, which was above the state readiness score, which was seventy-four point five. The final part of CCRPI, CCRPI is the graduation rate, which sometimes is a little bit confusing because two years ago, they changed the way it was calculated. Now it is a two-thirds to one-third calculation using the four-year cohort and the five-year cohort graduation rates. Then according to high school's four-year graduation rate is ninety-three point one. The five-year graduation rate is ninety-four point seven. When you use the calculation measure to determine graduation rate, our graduation rate is ninety-four point two percent, which is well above the Georgia state graduation rate of eighty-two point six. Now, in light of all those numbers, what does this mean for us? Well, it means our mission and our vision, they're totally unchanged. We're still committed, preparing our students for their futures, and we're continuing to strive for a hundred percent graduation rate. Yes, sometimes it is painful when you look at data and you realize that you're not exactly where you were a year before. If you know what, the view from the valley is just as good as the view from mountain sometimes. And sometimes having to be in the valley makes the mountain top even sweeter. So we have a lot going on in our schools, a lot of positive things. We're not represented in CCRPI and we will continue to work toward being true to our mission and our vision. So do you have any questions or comments?
I have a comment.
Okay.
Yeah, the way that the bridge is the second point and then the bridge is sticking through where it aims to exit. It's hard to hit that last thing. So the power yard, the better yard, in one form, harder it is to gain. And that's what you say and I believe.
It is, and that's a wonderful example of it. Also, it's kind of funny that this bears out what we were told last year, our bank said except for, you know, last year, one of the biggest things that the team felt like would be our challenge would be maintaining momentum. Once you get to a certain point, the hard part of it isn't necessarily the moving forward, it's the maintaining where you're at. And so last year, based on solely on standardized test scores, we weren't able to quite hold our own. But you ever work with children, you realize that learning is not a nice neat line that starts here and moves there. And unfortunately, the calculation for it does have an assumption that learning always is moving forward. Sometimes learning takes a step back. And so it is very, very difficult to continue to move forward, but yes, it is our commitment and we do value things other than just standardized test scores. You know, we do take the information, we do take it very, very seriously, and we study our data and make decisions based on it. You know, data isn't always just what happened on a standardized test. There's lots of other data out there also. And unfortunately, CCRPI is based almost solely on standardized test scores. Any other questions?
We got that dampened. It's serious.
It can dampen the spirits of teachers, it can dampen the spirits of administrators. Luckily, the kids don't understand it. And so, you know, they continue, they keep telling the school, and so we do what we do. And so we took, you know, a couple of days and kind of bored a little bit and then realized, you know, what this doesn't change who we are and the direction that we're moving in. And so.
I think that's what Superintendent Ruth is addressing in this part. The slide we're using again. I also agree to go take a look at the standardized test that was administered to determine the 2019 score. This is just a very short period of time that we had the Saks Advanced Day Committee here in our district assessing our structural practices and evaluated us within the same time that they were giving this test that were passing in the 2000. That's having exceptionally strong structural practices, the highest overall score that I've been off yet. So there are all ups and downs along the way.
That would be great. Thank you.
Great job, Sarah. It's probably something very complicated. Do you have any questions?
We're proud of it. This is not like, correct it when we feel in every year, it's hard on you to watch our kids perform. They're confident, they're smiling, they're happy. It sure must be good. But.
Yes, sir. If I'm correct, I listened to Union County talk about their, their scores as well as the county county. They're actually experiencing the same things because they're at such a high level. They were saying the scores doesn't do justice because we're actually doing better than the school did. So we're not the only ones that are struggling a lot. Actually, it's right here in our neighborhood too.
I think it speaks well integrity of our system. And our system seems to want to put up positive scores. Ours actually, accurately reflect the results and the fire is really.
Thank you, sir. Next time on agenda is facilities up there. Come forward for the six, seven, eight.
Good afternoon, good morning. Just good evening. I'm not ready to add to that, there are all those wonderful things. My big brief. A couple of things, some pictures here. I know I'm excited, I know you're excited of this rubble. Because that rubble's been a long time ago. And that's what's remaining at the old maintenance building. Actually, those pictures were taken last Thursday, so.
Things like the Pandora pop?
It really is. And what has taken so long now because of the demolition is because it has to go to a special facility, even though all the asbestos is moved, even this rubble has to go to a specialized facility, has to be signed off. So again, our contractors who are getting rid of this rubble had some sickness. So they've got one driver and they've got one driver that's just, you know, trying to go and do everything else. So again, hopefully choose the ones that's weak, why it doesn't.
We call it hot or black, hot layer.
That's it, that's it. You know, we had thought about leaving the concrete pad there, but depending on the choice of what you're going to do with it, it'd be more valuable if we go ahead and lose the concrete. Even with taking the walls down, some areas will just crumble, some areas are eight and nine inches thick. And so it's, even though the dumpsters are there, they can only fill about three quarters of the weight of all the weight, the concrete and so again, that can, so the cantrals cannot be completely filled up again for this. I'll be glad to take that temporary pencil down and turn it over to y'all, nobody wants to change. So again, I know you'll be excited to do that.
I appreciate your work, you definitely deliver it. Pop the way.
This doesn't look like much, but Mr. Barnstead has asked for years, since the radio station has come into play. We got the transmitter at the CKE on the generator there, which is wonderful. But then what's at the stadium? What's at the stadium? Is it stadium or transmitter?
Transmitter's at stadium. At stadium, correct.
Studio. Okay, the studio, we have the studio on the generator, so we can just produce all this stuff, the power with them, we can transmit. And what Mr. Barnstead, every time it happens, you know, he gets an email, the FCC gets involved and that sort of thing. So he's been asking for years, can we get the transmitter at the stadium, put on the generator? That's at the stadium. It's been denied, 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 so I'll take it to the maintenance guys, I said, can we make it back? And at first, they went, eh, I don't know. And actually, I gotta take notes because I'm not that efficient. And so the generator at the stadium was a 480 volt prepaid, electrician, I don't know what that means. So they took the leg off of the, they took the 270 leg off of it, put another spark on. They did a small transfer. Take it to 240, 120. So now the entire press box center section where the press box is located at is now the generator. This week, we know that it worked. The power pole got hit down here, we got probably 5:30 in the morning that we had no power at the high school. We're out riding the roads looking at snow, the length of snow. And so we go flying up here, the high school hill is black, except that big press box too. Yes, it worked. So I take Mr. Barnstead, like a radio.
This was on here.
That's right, I take Mr. Barnstead, I said, the radio system, the radio go down. That's right, I take Mr. Barnstead, I said, the radio system, the radio go down, he said, no doubt. Hopefully gets an email immediately. And Mr. Barnstead, yeah, Mr. Barnstead emails, power went off. So, again, we know that it's done correctly, and maintenance department's done this, if you're not familiar with that. Next couple of things, just a quick update. Actually, today, we started the awning at the high school. Mr. Schoeffler made a request since the new parent picked up and dropped off, he was down behind the, uh, behind the school. He asked for the awnings, and we put that in place, so we got that, actually started today, hopefully by tomorrow afternoon. The awning will be, we'll get some stripes there to help keep kids safe and dry, even cool from the sunshadows. So, again, hopefully that'll be completed tomorrow.
We're going to make it through that.
No, so we did contract that with a Lumen awning company, and so, again, it maxes all the awnings we got on every campus. Very quickly, a hundred and seven workdays so far, five-hundred-six work orders being completed by maintenance department. Recorded work orders, again, I know it's important, that just give them a little shout out. Tomorrow morning, the maintenance department has eye patch now, I think I missed that before we, which has been great, but again, maintenance men are not timers. So, it's very, it's hard to type on that. So, I talked to the tech department, they've got some extra chrome books laying around. Maintenance man at seven-thirty in the morning, we're going to go up, get painting on the chrome books. Hopefully, very near future, even though they're online, if they're at a school, before they leave that school, check their email real quick. You know, say they're at East Fanning. So, if they're coming back to the shop, we have something on the piece of paper laying there on the label for work orders there. It's at East Fanning. So, when we get this done, lead man or I can forward that email out if we got, and maintenance department is going to check their email. We'll forward that right to them, and they might fix that by the door. So, hopefully, we're going to get more, even more efficient in very near future. We've got some time tomorrow for that.
Any questions from Mr. Dan?
It may look good after we're on the video.
It will look good by Tuesday, thank you. There's going to be. Thank you, Mr. Dan.
Just, Dan, we have a question for you. While you're open? No, sir. Thank you. And we'll take the number eleven for District Financial Court Director of School Finance, Susan Henn. Your time for this, Laura Jones.
Good evening, Laura. I'd like to present to you our financial statements for September thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, with the general fund and twenty-five percent being complete. And we are at fifteen point nine-nine percent of revenue versus thirteen percent last year. And our expenditure is right at twenty-three point fifty-nine percent more budget versus twenty-three percent for last year alone. So, we have excellent financial.
You ready for four? Red and blue, down. Please make that recommendation for financial board members.
Do you have a question for two of them? I'm going to ask you a question. Awesome. You got it. You know, there's a page. Can you, you can swap?
Our swap's worth much?
No.
Five-hundred-and-thirteen thousand fifty-two thousand fifteen thousand. And that's what we're saying.
Five-hundred-and-ninety-nine, and we have a million, fifty-nine.
Six, nine.
Congress, Congress.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments? The next one is, uh, state law twenty-two, nine sixty-two requires for the school financial approval group this week.
And this I'd like to show you is our new financial statements, because you're going to see every quarter for your schools. And this is Blue Ridge statement, and if you, as you scroll through, you've got general fund, and you break it down, field trips. You've got your beginning balance for state's disbursement. So, this is for the very first quarter, July the first through September the thirtieth for each school. So, the next time you're going to see it, you're going to see from July first through the, in, through December thirty-first. So, you're not going to get just a quarter, but you're going to get it from the beginning of that school to the end. So, each individual balance, you can see grants, STEM, you have different STEM grants. So, you've got every, every school from the middle school and from the CVA and.
And I'd like to say, this is very, this was the vision of being able to organize this, and getting the schools together. And then with the courts, they were active, I think they appeared differently, they were a different format, presented a different way. This one has gone in and made it consistent, and made it more thorough.
I'm happy to say every school turned pitch out. And they're going to operate handwritten, they're going to write anything.
And they're tied to the planning system. So, they're doing other things, they're stringing, and they've done a great few of the work, and I'm seeing the order that's listening to that chapter.
And these accounts are also set up, sort of more tied easily to go into all eight. They're going to be kind of mirror.
So, you put reports, they're located by, it's pretty, or state law, before approval.
I'm going to get a confirmation from these reports after you. That marching.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Then I'll let you say.
Well, a milk pillar, that sounds, this is, yours?
Thank you. We have a milk pillar that is at Fannin County Middle School. And I don't actually know how old the milk pillar is because my records don't have the year it was purchased. But based on the inventory number, and I can look at some other equipment in that same number range, I think it's probably from like ninety-two or ninety-three. So, we have definitely got my use out of this milk pillar, and maintenance has checked it out, and it has no longer, it has no more useful life. So, I would love for you to appropriate for South Beach.
All right, you know. Prepare my recommendations for South Beach, and then. This is, so your forms.
Okay. The next thing that I have to talk to you tonight about is the Farm to School Initiative of Fannin County School System yesterday. And this is really fun to talk about. Farm to School ties school nutrition into STEM and many of the other activities that are going on throughout the school system. Our agribusiness, our canary. Our dinner plate, yes. And many of the awards that our district has received. So, you might ask, what is Farm to School? Right now, you're getting Farm to School training, and I'll check that box on our government application next spring. We offer locally grown items on our school menus, and some of those items we help our school gardeners with the students grow. Students participate in taste tests featuring locally grown foods, some of them that that rubbers sells. And students interact with farmers. You've seen where our school governance teams have promoted field trips, do milk rest authors, the seers authors. They go to see goats, and many different types of farms. And sometimes the farmers come to school, or come to the school to talk to the students. We have a custodian friend in our school that is a beekeeper, bee coach. And he helps our students about the bees and the opponents, and his role as a bee. So, those are some kind of examples to do. Teachers integrate Farm to School into their curriculum, and you can see these students at Blue Ridge Elementary School that are green beans and other, that they're growing in their school gardens. They do have edible gardens, they can snack along the way, and even play glasses with that. Students participate in hands-on cooking and food activities featuring local foods with chefs. We've had Chef Nellie in several of the schools this year. Our teachers come in, parents, school nutrition staff, and other school leaders or community leaders. School staff participate in Farm to School professional development training, and so do our board members, participate in Farm to School training. And Farm to School language is adopted into the district's policy and procedures. And we didn't have that as an administrative regulation, that we participated in long to school activities. And that was, came into play last year, especially once we moved the agriculture facility. That's really an awesome project that we have out there.
Well, this all on a retreat last week, and you start, you start this new one, that is.
These are some pictures from Blue Ridge Elementary School. They talk about the life cycle, and they hatch eggs, and raise the chickens, and then the chickens lay the eggs, and so it begins again. Captain Planet is the program that they have on at Blue Ridge Elementary School. It's lots of fun, and you can get them out of the net if you want. And parents and community members are involved in the Farm to School program. And we have a group with us tonight that definitely play a major role in our Farm to School program here in Fannin County. We have Ms. Connie Galloway with us, and she has two of her buddies with her, Betty Fannin. Connie Galloway, we have Kathy Beck, and Priscilla Cashman. I'm not sure if they're going to come up, or if they're going to let you do all the talking, Ms. Connie. But Ms. Connie is here to talk to you a little bit about Fannin County, and we're so glad that she's here because she works with our students, and our students love her. I have seen her work with them, and they just, they feel the.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Great to see you. Glad that you're here with us this evening.
Okay, so I've been with Fannin quite some time since I played, um, two thousand and twelve. So, this is our Fannin mission statement. We work to educate the community for social efficiency, and then we buy food locally in the, the green path of farm professionals. This year, we celebrated, two thousand and nineteen, we celebrated in the, the. So, we had a celebration this year. Then, we did confirmation with the, the commissioners. They were trying to do something at the library for us. We were very blessed because, you know, it was, it was very close to us. So, we had each year have our bulk of hope financial. And this year, we were blessed to raise thirty-seven thousand. That money is, our first one, we were hoping we would raise a thousand, we're like, oh. We raised thirty-one thousand. We were like, wow, we never ever dreamed we would raise thirty-seven thousand. So, we use that money to buy stuff, probably buy eggs, get gallons of milk for each family, they like milk. Buy canned food, staple food, and we were able to do water, my water. So, we had a great event at bulk of hope. Yeah. Be worried, we have to try to have a lot of fun. And we also try to do the, in the state parade, give our seats to people that, you know, hope to, because not everybody does, but, you know, some people. We have a great group of people, all to, we've got, and this is our garden, small garden. That's one of the things that, I can't thank the school enough, of course, but we've been. Uh, thank you, we went there in two thousand and thirteen. So, you know, if you're not releasing property to us, we cannot do any more. So, this is a small part of the garden. Some of the vegetables that we use wood. Yeah. Okay, these are our gardens. Yeah. Very good people, of course, very, very. We have our newsletter. Your son, Galloway, Galloway. Because that, that would be great. So, we would do want to thank you very, very much for allowing us to be there. All the people that are all part of Fannin, appreciate you, and hope you be for us.
Well, thank you. Very glad. Do you feel?
Well, we, uh, we work. We do some composting. Please, we get some leaves from the city, and it's always. Yeah, we play organic.
Yeah, I'm sorry to see you.
We do organic. Those people, people love the stuff. We're grateful about it in our newsletter, we kind of comped our own, we kind of make it our own. Each ads can make certain, we kind of can comp our own. They, because they feel a lot of the stuff, I do, again, it's absolutely. But, yeah, they, so we work to, you know, make the place where we're, where we're last, trying to last, we have to do that. See, we have a composting thing, scarecows. One thing that's really great about Blue Ridge, ours, we are caused from the.
Accent.
Yes.
So, it's a beautiful view from the accent. I was part of the accent, and I could see your garden, and it was beautiful.
And one of the great things that was a dream in mind when I first started working with Fannin was perhaps FFAS did one. In Florida, because we have the same screen, we have the same goal, you know. So, this is, this is the first year I've been out there. FFAS did it to kind of help us, and they helped us harvest sweet potatoes. Seasoned, you know. Our district is a dad. So, we, great kids, Kathy has wonderful, not working, but she's one of them. So, this year, we've already got the cover property, so we'll enter, see how many we can garden. Some of the gardens. This year, they harvested one thousand seven hundred and forty-four trees. They've been struck record. Thousand and twenty-one, twenty-one thousand, made us a garden, so we lost, we lost a lot of things. You know, they, you had a fish, you, you made a, she's from the sandwich, she's in the garden, I'm going to make it. Um, we see other things that we got wrong. So, this year, we had a wonderful year, we, big batch of folks, uh, playing, not down, maybe.
That's what I promise. Incredible amount of work, and it's, it's so important for children, our students, to understand that, although they purchase food, the store doesn't come from the store. And Fannin has been a great STEM partner for us for many, many years, and they've helped us to get to put in, raise beds, and those types of things. They've been a great partner for us, and we appreciate what you guys have done. As you can see from the pictures, we've just, and different ones that we've had out there, we've put a lot of those, pretty good.
Bye.
We love that. And in the false vote, and if there's one other quarter, that we have, it's wonderful for something that I've known. This is time to move, this next event on, sixteen, Mr. Andrew Lee's.
They only have a bunch of.
You can do it ten years.
Big Fannin started.
You think, then don't do it organic.
Yes.
Tell me different from the soil that you, you started.
Yes, when, actually, when we moved to the farm, we brought in some topsoil, because it had been used for several, many years. And so, as they keep working and putting in all the water, the soil that they presented, it just keeps getting better and better and better. Of course, now, I have to, you know, I don't really know my garden, but. I'm the cheerleader.
One thing we did notice was when the accent was built, and we had to trench through the rice vest and through the middle of the garden, and we lost a lot of soil, that was going to be a big difference. But we've since, you know, continued to rebuild that, adding amendments to it, and it's coming back, and we keep applying, so.
So, young soil management. One of the great things about.
I like your praise. Official adjectives to the soul. I grew up in a farm, and really, luckily, I'm young this year, I shared some photographs out, and some people came back and said, well, what kind of fertilizer would you use instead of, outside of having a bit of thunder, and I keep saying, please. I said, is it Bob White's progressive organic? Outside of having a little thunder, and I keep saying, I said, well, it's Bob White's progressive organic. I'm sure that there were a few researches.
Yes.
That's awesome.
You're a great.
Great job. So as mentioned during the presentation, now it's time to visit the next two thousand two sixteen which is to approve Feet Fannin lease. They are school office. You have a lease agreement this time, it's expired, so you can also go report from the end office to its fund lease.
There's not much to add to what has been a wonderful presentation, but you're a governmental entity, and as a governmental entity, you are entitled and authorized to enter into leases that have no monetary value per se with community partners. And I do not think of a better community partner than this school system has long advocated for the importance of nutrition for our students, as evidenced by our law of spending free breakfast program that a child who's hungry cannot, cannot learn and get, uh, optimum. And we have, uh, numerous families that benefit from the programs that Feet Fannin have. Plus, our own students benefit from the opportunity to literally go across the creek, so to speak, and, uh, work with these great master gardeners. The lease can be terminated by either party. There is no liability to this school system, and it's a win-win for everyone.
Absolutely, win-win, much like the veterans.
Yes, exactly, totally.
Win-tangler.
And it's a, you know, we, as, as stewards of taxpayers' money, of taxpayers' property, there's sometimes that you own property that there is no, there is, it doesn't fit into the traditional classroom and levels of utilization of property, but then rather than let it sit down, find ways to use it that enrich our students in ways outside the traditional classroom. That is, programs being one of them, and Feet Fannin being another wonderful community partner. So I would highly, uh, suggest that we continue the lease agreement. It's the same as it has been years past, and, uh, I think it's a win-win program.
Let's see if they have any questions, and we'll stop. We haven't had the opportunity to review the lease, any questions? Get done, chair, recommend the, uh, the lease as a process.
I like the motion, approve, lease agreement, Feet Fannin. Thank you. Our traditional education resource for our students as well as the community.
How about the slide? You guys want to say? Let's take a picture of Feet Fannin, I'm sure he has.
Well, ain't bad now, but every time they're papering her, yeah. This is what it uses.
It's a little. This is not a high, so I don't know when I get.
That's all, actually, and that happened, yeah.
All right, please, Tom, first you should question. You decide.
Oh, yes. We see we would like to take our students over to Robinson's Stadium. I hadn't read that word out, I didn't know what that is, as a bit, it's a book that people use for making barrels, uh, and in the old, and that, that we're doing is a career exploration. We try to help students to see different, um, job sites and things that they come, and they not get to work. And then they, we had a student who came back, uh, so he quit and came back, getting graduated, and it was eighty dollars an hour award, and, uh, here, so they're very impressed with Robinson's. And they, they're gonna let us come in there, feel a bit trip, and we gotta accept that they want to appear with, uh, maybe get less, less routes for them.
Any questions from Tom? Mr. Chairman, presentation, first, please, question, I feel like.
I just, I don't think you're active.
I'm ready. Thank you. How about the slide? Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Allen, Ms. Randy, local board training and evaluation update.
Yes, sir. Uh, good afternoon, board. Uh, it is that time of year where we start looking at our self-assessment as part of our, our local board training. This is where you can, uh, be, uh, apply for the exemplary board status. Uh, so hopefully, in the next couple of days, we'll send out the self-assessment to you. But it's also the same time of year when we do Dr. Watkins' evaluation. And, uh, I'll be sending that out to you as well. We received an email, and if you have any questions about that, uh, just let me know. We'll really work on that, his evaluation will be in December, uh, next board meeting. Uh, we have our next board retreat, January the ninth. Looking forward to that. Uh, Mr. Brian Buffyham will be with us, and we'll spend the whole day again, just like we did, uh, the last time, from, uh, you know, for that six-hour training, and, uh, we're looking at the community and the school system message, and looking at our technology initiative that we got going on. Weather committee. If I must know that, there's a spelling bee's not that bad. We will, uh, we will, uh, we're looking forward to that, and, uh, it's, 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 but we'd be looking for some emails, and we'll send some notification out to you, uh, about, you know, what, how, how to make sure that you get enough information out, uh, to be able to take the self-assessment and his evaluation.
There's no action, you know?
No actions, so we're really buzzing for this thing.
Mr. Chairman, Tom, we're giving this personnel, I prefer to the chair, as to whether it's going to be taken.
All right. You're good, Jim. All right. You're good.
All right, thank you, sir. Goodness. This is a way to catch up. Ready? All right, this is the personnel sheet, Mr. Chair, for eleven fourteen nineteen reservations. Crystal four, effective date eleven eighteen, I think, make that recommendation.
Do you have that log?
Second.
First, five.
Sandra Citizen, effective eleven one nineteen, make recommendations, Chair.
That log should be.
Second.
First, five.
Thank you. Beadie Clemmons, effective one one twenty-four.
I have second log.
I have second.
First, five.
Clemmons, Chair. Recommendations, these are of course, including a criminal background check and paperwork. We will take two together, include same effective date, eleven fifteen nineteen, in position of parent professional. Amber Jones, recommendations, make that recommendations, Chair.
First, please.
Second.
First, five.
Maureen Sidlow, parent professional, effective date twelve one nineteen, make recommendations, Chair.
That should be good. Make that log. Second. First, five.
Thank you. Jessica Long, student information specialist, effective date one one twenty-four.
That should be good.
Make that note.
Okay. First, five.
One recommendation for such a teacher, and that is Ashley, make that recommendation, Chair.
That should be good.
Second. Thank you, board. Next out of the student, comments, and, uh, I would like to thank all the veterans, uh, for their service, especially the nice guests, Mayor Stodden, thank you, Lieutenant Colonel Fletcher.
Yes, sir, thank you. It has truly been my honor and privilege to be here tonight, sir, and it's always my honor and privilege to run out ten dollars to the veterans appreciation programs. Thank all, very much appreciated, and this is the most patriotic county I've ever been involved in, and I involved in, and I salute you, thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. It's great to have great partners, and just like you said, Feet Fannin, we look the same for our local veterans.
Yes, sir, thank you.
I would like to thank the principals and thank the schools for their programming. I plead to honor veterans, and I, I give you a hand, and it was a phenomenal presentation. General board members here, September five, US Navy Mike Cole, yesterday's at Westfend, and did a fine job. To, to school. Congratulations for our best rodeo winners, Candy Sisson, Miss Ward, and STEM student representatives of Westfend, all members, so I think they've all gone home, get ready to bed, did a great job. But it's tough to get up in front of a crowd, explain that project, and I was so proud of them, and get up in front of the group of professionals, and explain their project, so, so, I don't know. Principal Rudy Corrigan, very good, great job, on your school hat, great job, for what you've been at Westfend. Uh, Ms. Winkin, to a subject that's extremely complicated, and just while we're understanding, broken down, and they're just able to see it, uh, it is important, and Mr. Brown, the Senator, feet training there, and I respect that. That's what we're all about. Congratulations to our two thousand nineteen, minor recent, higher education, award recipient, tire surgeon, and boy on. That, that wore going out, that was on social media, and covered in these papers as well. We appreciate having coverage, and to recognize Mr. Corrigan, if he's a law of third, might super. I'd like to recognize ETC, and, and Frank is, Frank is not here, so when I do, it won't tell him. But, uh, they recently had their community lunching for us, but, uh, outside their annual ETC's gonna be last Saturday. I don't know anywhere that you have. And, uh, the generous, the night grubs, which are just the level of funding and support that ETC does for the schools, and Fannin has aired quite well, they're extremely competitive to these brands. And, uh, that make a difference in our classrooms, and it was announced yesterday that Fannin has these eleven finals.
We, we have had nine finals this year. We have brought home over thirty thousand dollars over the last couple of years, but we have nine finals right now. We have one, we have a recent tape, uh, we have two at Westfend, and the three five, uh, Karen Good, and then, and the K two, Ken Patterson, Minnie Rice. East Fannin has two, Paula Hart, uh, in the three five, and Nate Harder in the three five. Uh, in Fannin County School, we have two, uh, Ishidober in the six eight, and Nate and Dean in the six eight. And then Fannin County High School, we have two, Oliver Carroll, nine twelve, and Serena Howard in the nine twelve. So we have nine finalists that are going, you got two?
Yes. Eight, two, and three.
Well, it's ten bottles.
Ten bottles. So we've got a shot at a lot of money, if I'm saying, and, uh, because these are ten thousand dollar grants, correct? So, uh.
About ten spots have sixteen.
I, I'm thinking, but they're sixteen, so we, I'm hoping we're going to make all, that's thirty thousand dollars this year. Uh, and it's always fun to go to, you know, the county and take the money now. That, that is, uh, so, I'm sorry, I missed one, huh?
First spot.
First spot, okay. But, uh, thank you for your presence, because that is a great, uh, it's a great way. And I know, I talked to Ms. Tate last week at best, and she was telling me all about a project with Lindsay. You're excited about it?
Yeah, that was great. I take responsibility for this, and I, because I'll tell you, uh, ETC emails me, and they're just, they kept coming in, and I just think, oh, my goodness, oh, my goodness, just the jackpot. And, uh, I must have missed four of his robbers to keep track of that for this, so, yeah, that's awesome.
Ten. Yeah.
Um, that's incredible. Uh, Candy, again, your, your presentation on Feet Fannin, and, and Miss Galloway, congratulations. On the lease renewal as well, and, uh, we're glad to have you across the creek. Uh, the Reach sunnies this week, and it was wonderful, to see the students at the time. And I will, again, call out Candy, so District Reach coordinator, and I think we've seen a great deal of assistance from the professors.
Exactly, and they're the market guys without the mess.
At the middle school. I'm thankful we can have the Reach ceremony, we were on a, we were on a delayed start of school because of, uh, because of the weather, winter weather has started early. And, um, I'd like to thank our, I call them the road warriors, our CSS road warriors, who have been out very early that morning. Chandler Foster, Jazzanne, Sarah Riden, Frankie Riden from ETC, you know, checking road. Also, Darvin Couch, and Robert was in a conference, but he's always up there with us, too.
I was, it was seventy-five, Ross.
And when he told me that, I'm, you know, I was seventeen, and my mother is spitting a whole mess of something frozen, and he was telling me about seventy-five degrees in here in the ocean, uh, that meeting.
Yeah.
But, uh, but we were out on the roads very early, two mornings this week, trying to keep kids safe, and make decisions, making very difficult decisions, I've been told, that would be the most difficult decision, but certainly one of the most difficult decisions, because of water considerations that go into that, including weather. Just one, so it's a decision that I think is seriously, safety is always first, and it's first, and it's. I would also like to say we've got some community partners that help us out with that. Fannin County Sheriff's Office, Fannin nine one one, Bishop Melton, Road Department, um, they're all a part of that, and they're out there actually working the roads as well, and checking for us. And so we're thankful those community partnerships can all kind of make it go when it gets easier. This week is Thanksgiving week in schools, and I know that some of you have been even today, the equal family, and, uh, I want to give a shout out to nutrition teams, uh, the award winning nutrition teams. Because our hard work for a family together to come to school and have lunch with your child, grandchild, it's amazing, it's wonderful. And with that, here in the month of November, this Thanksgiving, this time reflects, you know, this time reflects the hope that's in mind, for which we're thankful. And I would like to take a moment to express how thankful I am to be here, and how blessed we are here in Fannin, because we have a caring community, excellent students, wonderful students and staff, and all of this on my, just, sure.
Say it a little bit. I'm saying what I'm honored to be, like, to you, my honor, how, how we could succeed in this school's development. Especially, uh, you, you, how you're doing, you have, uh, wow, like, this is, yeah. Congratulations, members of staff, the name of each of our, uh, we have so, we appreciate all of you. I want to say that, especially, I think, the best people, it's over after, and, like, me, I'm, things that are positive, and all that, we expect that those are probably, uh, who, thank you for, and I want to thank, uh, now.
I'm very thankful, the opportunity to be with all of you, migrants, so talented, so, uh, um, transferring our students, school, society, nutrition, too, marketing, none of them discussed, just, just too hard. I keep a test, we have to express, we choose, particularly marketing, we need to discipline, uh, at, at this level, and to celebrate your accomplishments. But, uh, as I said, I said, always, bring faith in yourself, and you remind myself that the ultimate benefits of all our methods are students. And, and their success, so gratifying, and we're so out here, we're truly successful, I think, this week, uh, with this state, and in the national action, uh, especially marketing, and system, I want to be proud of that.
Now, I want to thank PEO, everything that's been saying, I appreciate everyone that's been here tonight, uh, spent in our, uh, French point vineyard, and, uh, I have to eat Thanksgiving meal at Westfend with my great granddaughter, and we went into the lunchroom, and I told my wife, I said, this is a holy turkey. But it turns out, it's great, you know, just walking in, the whole thing is full, and it all works out. That's good meal, man. Good. Uh, the rodeo, I don't know, we're gonna have this, we're gonna have this, before somebody in, we'll get you off the table. Is that right?
I believe so. He's, he's a really tough competitor, but, you know, the thing about it is, that, that really illustrates how, how good our drivers really are. And, uh, I think, I'm so thankful to be on here, because we did, we did.
That's for sure. Uh, I'm also glad to be invited, you. Uh, I'm also glad you invited you, you found it down, with the kids, but in that, uh, that gives them some excitement, because how their road drivers are better aware of what's happening when they're out driving dirt, you know? Uh, Big Ben, I just cannot, uh, uh, with Big Ben. Great, cool. And, uh, I thought I had a good place for you. I appreciate everybody being here, and I'm glad to be here, and I'm glad, I, I, I...
Thank y'all for telling that, and, uh, I tell people that Scott was here earlier, for when you kind of figured some form of what's, what's going on, I was taking a place. Like Mr. Russo, it's kind of funny how you assess yourself about what you see, you know? He talked about the costume, and what does that say about you? Uh, I was, I was noticing, um, Miss Hyb's, uh, southern drawl, I like that, it'll, it'll change. And, uh, the fact that, uh, Mr. Ritten put, put the banner to sleep.
He was a... I said, "Pregnant," I'm...
And the fact that, uh, Mr. Rensley, uh, somebody has to make the sacrifices, that's why he's got to be there, so, uh...
It just happened that once.
But in a ser- serious note, uh, Logan, who, who got up there, his name stuck with me right off, out, uh, you know, and then introduced him, and he starts talking about, uh, heart rate and things of that nature. But he's so, uh, elegant, speaking, you know? That's, that's so impressive, uh... Not to take anything from the other kids, he just, the way he spoke was just, uh, amazing. And, uh, upon the school, uh, effort, I, I love that. Uh, we fan all of the, the pride that you say, hey, the, the train's there, you know? And I see that through our whole school system, not just there, and talking to parents about, you know, over at the baseball field, the seeds that they put out, what they're, they're trying to make, and make it green the whole time, because they want it to look good when the opposing team comes. And I see that throughout our school, where people are proud and, and wanting to look the best, and, and that's just impressive, we have an impressive school system, and so... Uh, last thing, like, uh, we're talking about going to Robinson Staves, uh, and my wife, for finding the property, for that place to get here. Uh, she found it, they were looking in various locations, and she found that property, which, uh, Mr. Robinson, I, I, I believe, has now sold that property, but it's still Robinson Staves, but he's a great guy. And, uh, they're just a good company, though, they still, like I said, they, they pay well. They want to pay, they wanted to pay more when they came here than, you know, that was his incentive, just to be, be a top provider, you know? And, and so, that's a good, good company. I believe we're in a good community, and, uh, my friend there, uh, communication, talking about this great place, and people wanting to come here, it is a great place. And I ask you to be a part, the family, and be a part of the school system, be a part of this board, and it's very good to, uh... I think that's in school, I know. That would be saying, give first, 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 give one of them. Okay, with me. Back there.